Order. Tracy has taken roll call and thank you for waiting for us for the delay. Our work session did go over, and so now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the high of the United States of America. And it's through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're on item three, which is to review, revise, approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by trustee Hayes. Second by trustee Walsh. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, all those in favor for approving the agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. unanimous to all trustees present. So now we'll move on to item four, which are to approve the board, approve the minutes from the special board meeting on October eighth, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting? Moved by trustee Wallock. Second by trustee Witt. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. All in favor for approving the special board meeting minutes of October eighth, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October eighth, 2024? Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews. Second by trustee Walsh. Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approving the minutes for the regular board meeting of October eighth, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So now we'll move on to item five, which is public comment. Public comment portion of meeting is set aside for the public to address the board and body. It is not time for board response up for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on right of privacy of others, please sign in as value first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes. Any public comments? No public comments. So now we'll move on to item six, which are reports of announcements, and I'll turn it over to superintendent Hale for his announcement.
Thank you. First announcement, Principal Holmes told me that if Sealy wins their next football game, they will have a home playoff game for the first time since 1994, which would be really a huge deal for this community. So if they lose, they're pretty sure they'll have a road playoff game, but we're hoping to get them here at home. So congratulations to them on their successful season. We concluded our safe storage campaign, 241 locks distributed, and we're in conversation about running the campaign again in the spring and maybe parading our elementary and middle schools, getting a little bit more upstream in our prevention efforts and community awareness. So looking forward to continuing to do that. Last week and this week, we sent out the cell phone survey. As of 2:45 PM, we have 3,546 responses. So I think it'll be even more. So 2,300 of those were parent, 890 were students, and about 290 were staff. So we'll give them until October 28th to complete that survey. So looking forward to sharing that in our next work session, which will be in November. And then also wanted to share just a little bit, these are numbers, and at some point we'll put it into maybe some sort of a chart form, but we're coming up on our enrollment count, and out of curiosity, I was wondering, well, how many students are zoned for Missoula County Public Schools that are not attending Missoula County Public Schools? And the breakdown is as follows. We have in homeschool, there are 145 elementary students and 61 high school students, according to the county superintendent's office. Attending public school out of district, we have 38 high school students attending either Drummond, Florence, or Frenchtown. We have 196 elementary students attending Bonner, Clinton, Smith, Florence, Frenchtown, Helgate, and Target Range. And then in our private schools, we have 869 elementary students and 253 high school students in private school. So if you're looking for the quick total, that's 352 high school students and 1,210 elementary students who are zoned for MCPS that are not currently attending our schools. I know there was an article that came out where superintendent, state superintendent Ernst was talking about the decline in enrollment in Montana Public Schools overall this year. I think it's down 1.3% from last year. So just thought I'd share that as just kind of some statistical information. We'll do some sort of graphical representation with numbers and who's at each school in the future. And those are my announcements.
Are you willing to take a question about an item? You don't need to address now, but I'm curious about. When I was at MSL, there was a talk about funding for lead light mitigation, and I just wondered how far along we are on our own efforts.
Yeah, Burley would be able to answer this best, and I think he's slated to do a little interview there pretty soon. But we just finished repiping Jefferson School, so that's been completely redone, and we're still having ongoing mitigation efforts in all of our schools. If we're out and about, you'll see schools where if their drinking fountains haven't been mitigated, we have water coolers calling in water basically stacked up in alleys doing that. But are there any other schools in the hopper? Yeah, we're gonna probably start designing some pipe, redo some pipes at that hill for potential summer projects. We don't want to do the whole entire building, but the seventh and eighth grade, they want to be ready. And then parts of the quarter as well.
I was particularly interested because they were talking about grant funding for reimbursement, so I hope we were in check here.
Yeah, we continue to look at those. I know there's some block grants from Department of Commerce that are actually out there right now that are due here in about next month, so we're looking at potentially looking at those funding sources. Okay?
All right, so now we'll move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. There is no board discussion for consent agenda items as they are routine. Is, and tonight there's only elementary motion for the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Witt. Second by trustee Walsh. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. All elementary trustees in favor of approving the consent agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, all elementary trustees present. So now up is old business, item eight, and again, we're moving back to our work session. Talk to approve WGM selection to facilitate an MCPS comprehensive plan for vacant buildings and properties. And so this is over to you, Mr. Williams.
How much do I dive into this given we just spent an hour on it?
I wouldn't dive in too much.
Okay.
We can give more time to our presenters if they wanted to go in depth in certain areas that you guys wanted, you would like for us.
I think if there are specific questions, I would be grateful they'd answer them, but I'm not sure which specific area to answer.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions to any trustees. Trustee Hayes?
I can't just yell.
Might be careful giving me a mic. So I just have a quick question on the travel trips. Are you guys traveling from out of town, or I'm just confused at what those are?
Yeah, so LPW, so we're local in Missoula. LPW is based out of Great Falls. And so the reason that those were called out individually for on all of the schedule was just because we were trying to be efficient in how those trips. So if somebody's coming up from Great Falls, that we're trying to make sure that we've got meetings stacked. But everyone, and Rachel is local in Missoula as well, so it's really just the architect that would be traveling.
I think you'll notice that you'll see the same travel trip number on numerous items. That's where I would stay.
Vice chair Walker Andrews?
Yeah, I think I do have a question about the value piece that you're talking about. So it makes sense to me that you want to know what the biggest concerns are and that those would then be used to sort of gauge how important a particular piece of property or building is. I presume that's what it means. And so I was wondering how much that takes into account ideas that people have, like I hear all the time, why don't we have a place to rent to teachers who have problems finding housing? And obviously, that would only apply to certain properties, if at all, but are those the kinds of things that you're thinking about with those values other than what's already here?
I'm gonna figure this out. Yeah, so as far as the values, it's really trying to understand, try to, let me explain this. Working, for example, with a developer on a project, there are, they have values that they bring to it, or maybe they're really interested in their, what type of return they're gonna get on their project. So that's like their value that's really important. On the slide that I showed you, that was from the scoring criteria, that is from a, it's actually the East Missoula Corridor Plans about the transportation project. So like, for example, safety was a really important thing that we wanted to make sure that we evaluated each option to determine how it was gonna meet that value. And so with MCPS, what we're trying to determine is like, what are these values that are most important? And so it could be housing. It could be, like, we don't know what they all are, I guess, you know? Is it like, yes, we wanna get, we wanna get a return in our investment off of it? We wanna make some money because we need to be able to invest that in something else? It could be a liability issue. I think it could be, we don't wanna be landlords anymore. You know, I think there are a lot of different things, and that's something we wanna go through and discuss with that planning committee to really understand that and also to get everybody on the same page. Because I think with what I've kind of heard about the discussions in the facilities committee is I think everybody's bringing different ideas and not necessarily thinking about what the goals are for the school districts. They don't all have, like, there's no clear clarity around that. So that's what we're trying to get to.
Trustee Walsh.
So this is a question for the WGM group. When we look at programs around the country where housing is being created for specific purposes, for workforce purposes, a lot of those are to do with community land trusts. Is that something that you guys would be looking into as part of this study of how to use community land trust to make housing more affordable and available for teachers? Is that, to the extent that this study would cover?
Yeah, I think that a community land trust has a mechanism to create affordable housing. Certainly, as we think about the values and the scoring criteria, we're creating values that will allow us to evaluate a number of different alternatives across the district and for each property in particular. As we think about the, like, the housing scoring criteria for each of those alternatives, we could sure think about the suitability for use of the community land trust model on that site. And I think about some of the vacant land alternatives having, we're doing, we're building a community land trust up on our side of Scotts Creek right now, and Kate and I are both working on that one. So familiar with the, with the model and concept, and I do think that could be the opportunity for a CLT community land trust on a specific site could be something that leads to a higher housing score as we think about that scoring criteria. If that is your question, Andrew?
Yes. Yeah, I think so.
Two questions. One, so there's a lot of talk here about sort of the public outreach and all of that. I guess as I've been thinking about this, that's slightly, I guess, doesn't make sense to me because I don't think we're necessarily planning any major, maybe on some of them we are, but it's not like we just, like, okay, next year we're gonna decide all these and we're gonna get rid of these or whatever. We just, I started wanting to take stock, I thought. So I guess I wonder, and then also, like, we are a representative elected body, public involvement seems to be like our role. I guess I question all of that to some degree. So my question is like, is that valuable? Why are we doing that? And then question two is just the down and dirty. I think the main gripe of the board from my perspective was the price tag, so justify it, I guess. Like, why does this cost this much? I think we'd all want this done if it was free, but the price is what hurts, so justify it.
Yeah, so speaking to the public outreach portion, you're looking at community facilities, public facilities, and you're gonna have a community, the community's gonna be interested. I think you've probably all been involved in or seen processes for public involvement in Missoula. Missoula has, that's the expectation within the community, is that you will do a public process for them, and if you don't include them in a public process, they will not come along with you and buy into whatever direction you wanna go. And so we feel like it's really important that we include the public in this process, and I think it'll help them understand decisions that you do make in the future. And we're not necessarily saying you're gonna make any of those decisions immediately, but I think they need to understand how you, whenever you do make those decisions, how you got to that point. Because I think you're gonna end up with people that are just upset. And I think, you know, Mika had mentioned, he's getting letters still about a decision made 20 plus years ago. And that's, it's not surprising from the Missoula community. So I think that's, a lot of it is just really bringing that community along, knowing that this is, these are public properties, and so they get a stand-up and they have an expectation for that in Missoula. And I think you're just gonna get a ton of pushback with any decision you make at whatever point if you don't bring the community along and let them in and be part of the process.
One thing I'll add to that, just to concur with what Kate was saying, was as part of the bond projects leading up to the election, now I know we're not talking about bond, we're not talking about vote, so I know it's a little bit different, but I'm a firm reliever that that bond passed. I mean, it's the biggest bond in state history to this day, $150 million we asked from our taxpayers. And I'm a firm reliever that the reason that passed was because the public involvement was so drastic. It was huge. I mean, it was, it was probably a three-year planning phase. I would say it's more than that because there was a lot of conversation that went up to that, but when you got the public involved, it was probably about a three-year process, project, process, and it was, it was meeting after meeting after meeting. And it was where I thought I was going on to so many public meetings, it was crazy. And Mark Thane, trustee, or superintendent Thane could probably agree, he went to probably even more than I did. Community meetings that we had were just super invaluable. So I understand where you're going with it, and I look at if the value is there, and I think the value is there for the bond, and I think the value would be there in regards to some of these properties being, you know, as I kind of went through the properties, there's a lot of communities that are very involved in these individual school sites. And to rely on that community to show that the board needs to have their discussion, I think it'd be better, better of us to have those abilities to hold those on site, all those communities, and I think it'd be a much smoother, smoother process for this type of place that way. So just kind of my 30,000-foot leap over that.
Trustee Walsh?
I could speak to the cost of.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that, please.
Second, the second part, trustee Poe's question. As we, as we looked at the scope of this work, so we went into the RFP with an idea of the type of effort that was needed to, that would be needed to fulfill the objectives of this project, which are developing a comprehensive analysis of each site from a multidisciplinary perspective, so that the school district has the information they need to make the right decision for each property, and then also the information that you might need to go back in the future and be able to look back and, why didn't we decide that was the right alternative at the time? Or is there another alternative we might, we might select? So as we walked through the, each phase of the project that Kate ran through in impressive speed fashion earlier, and we looked at each of the, each of the buildings and properties, we started to assess the, really the work that's needed to do justice to valuing those opportunities, completing a robust public involvement process, and being able to present recommendations to the, to the board of trustees that you can act on and also develop an implementable plan that you can, that you can fall back on. Each step in that process, it became really clear that each one of those was a necessity. And we did spend a fair amount of time with Micah Burley and Pat thinking about which property could we leave out or which step might we omit? And each, each one of those steps that leads towards that return on investment that it's the, I think the end product is bigger than the sum of the parts, some of its parts, when you think about each step that goes into it. For example, we thought about, maybe we truncate our open houses down to three instead of two, or sorry, instead of six. And you start to think about the value you gain from spending two hours at each building and being in the neighborhood and having folks that live in the neighborhood the opportunity to come in and voice their opinion. And then we think about the, the value of evaluating all the properties at once rather than, we also look into the exercise of, you have to trim these three properties out because we're not gonna use them. You think about that, maybe the scale there. There's a scale economy where you do it all at once and you get the best bang for your buck. And the goal, our goal is to get the best return, the best money, and key to. So I think we did a, I think we scrubbed pretty hard to try and trim scope, and where we ended up is presented as we believe the best value for your investment.
So my question is, and you kind of answered it a little bit just then, but can you help us imagine, we get, we fast forward right at the end of the study, and your recommendation, what would they look like to us? Is it, you know, sell this building, you're not gonna wanna use it later, this building you may wanna hold on to because there's a lot of growth in this area and you may need a school district or a school building? Can you help us, can you just describe what the end would look like a little bit more?
Sure, yeah, thanks for that question. I think the decision tree that Mike should be getting is, I'm not exactly sure what form that decision tree is gonna look like. It might be a mind map like we use for some of our schedules, or it's likely gonna be a narrative with, you know, an outline of some alternatives and probably some costs and other considerations, and then an overview of the score. I have a suspicion that some of the properties are gonna result in a pretty clear recommended alternative, but there's gonna be a lot of them where, you know, preserving optionality, preserving the option for, the right opportunity presents itself for the district to achieve the highest value, leverage the highest value from that property. You will have a framework or a decision tree to evaluate whether that opportunity that's presented is the right decision, something to evaluate those opportunities against. Seth, start to answer your question.
Trustee Witcher, then vice chair Walker Andrews.
Um, two things. The first thing is I wanna be really careful how we, if we do vote to go ahead and move forward with all this, is how we're approaching this with the public, because my concern is, is that people are gonna see these 13 properties as up on the chopping block, and it's gonna create a lot of public fear, and we're gonna get a lot of misinformation out there. And so I wanna be, like, if, like, the Peace Farm is on there, and there's gonna be people who interpret us analyzing the Peace Farm as us potentially selling the Peace Farm. And so I think we're gonna have to be really, really specific about how, and I just would be interested in, like, the actual engagement piece and how we're presenting this, is it gonna go, you know? I think we need to be very careful as a district how we're gonna do that, otherwise we're gonna have some really long school board meetings coming up. And then I, I can't remember what my second point was, but I, I'm a little bit confused. Could you, could you give me, I'm like, looking at these times, the times that are on this project process, is that what we're actually thinking? Are those just like estimates of when this is gonna be happening?
Yeah, so I, I'll start with your second question. Originally put this together with the anticipating a start date of April 2024. So we've blown past that for now in October. So basically, yeah, we basically, we have to just kind of push everything forward to the new start date, whenever that would be. And yes, those are like the lengths of time that it would take. The orange bars, there's flexibility. That was kind of the summer break over that, so that was, basically, we were gonna do kind of front-loaded some of the analysis work over the, or in the spring was the plan, and then we determined alternate options over the summer, and then we would do all of our public engagement in the fall. Or, we did this earlier, but basically, all public engagement in the fall when people are back and available. Is that, hit on that? Okay. And then as far as the, that public approach, we understand there's, you know, potential fear there, and so initial outreach was gonna be, is a survey, and that is to get feedback on what everyone's priorities are and values to get, and so that isn't just something that would happen in that planning committee, but it also is getting that feedback from the community. And then we would, this is where the website becomes really important. And we are proposing using a platform that has, it's a specific website that's built for public engagement, and there's a lot of different options within that that we can use. And we want to, when we, when we launched this website, we do wanna be careful about what we put out there. And one of the things I mentioned was that we want to have recommendations with that, some options that are gonna, sorry, I'm gonna use the word options, not recommendations, that'll come later, but some options out there, so that, for example, Peace Farms is up there, and we're like, one option is selling it, one option, you know, like, we don't wanna put that out there. Like, we wanna say, you know, is it renewed, you know, if there's three probably reasonable options, or maybe there's two, or maybe like, we can already say, like, we're not doing anything like that was determined right away. But ideally, there's a couple of options. There are some of the properties, it's gonna be controversial, we expect that, and that's why we've built in the option for additional meetings so that we can address that. But we don't wanna just leave it, we're trying to not make it just totally wide open when we introduce the project, because we understand that it can snowball pretty quickly.
Yeah, I would add to that. You know, sometimes on the other side of this, we have a group of people who say, well, the school district keeps coming to us and asking for money. We're running levees. Why aren't you selling, why don't you sell off what you aren't using and use that to fund schools? Well, we know the answer to that because those are one-time-only funds. And again, I would go back, the core purpose, why are we even talking about this? We're talking about facilities for our kids and whether or not we need to look to the future and how we're gonna plan for that. So if you look at an option for the Peace Farm, you might say, you know what, based on the projected growth of 1.37% and the new growth plan that the city just put together, you might need to consider the Peace Farm property in 40 years to be a middle school site. And we need to, and so we need to have those, the kind of things laid out, and then the work that they're gonna do is they're gonna be able to go in and say, yeah, that is a suitable site, or no, it's not a suitable site, it's in a flood plain, or there's some other things that we haven't considered as we do that. But right now, with, you know, with the exception of the Rymel property, Peace Farm, you know, the Helgate soccer field, some of those larger chunks of property, you don't really have suitable sites for building schools. Okay, so can we, this is where that synergy comes in as an option. Can we talk to the city about, is there another piece of property that would be suitable for us that we can exchange instead of engaging in a lease? Let them take ownership of the property and we get something else? Like, those are the considerations that I think that we're really trying to get at, not trying to sell off our properties to the school district, to the public.
Yeah, I think, and Jen got us started, that we're all kind of wondering what it looks like when it's all spoke done, and I guess I wanna follow up that still more. So for example, our superintendent talked about how we need more middle school opportunities for kids for more CTE kinds of stuff. And so, again, I'm wondering if at some point you might say, well, Mount Jumbo School would be a perfect place for 300 middle schoolers to go for maybe a different, one term early for one group of 300, a different term for the next. And so those are the kinds of things you might come back with. Or you might say, that building is so full of asbestos, I'm making that up, I have no idea, that you could never use it for anything. And so I guess that's what I, we're all sort of wondering what it is we, not, I'm not complaining about what we're gonna get, but we don't know what it is. When I go buy a dress, I know what I'm getting, right? When I go buy a dress, I know what I'm getting, right? But this is all very nebulous to me.
Sure. So, sorry, I totally lost my train of thought, I have an idea. So I think the biggest thing is that we are, it's a, it's a process. And so that is something we're going to have to navigate, but we're trying, you may have missed it because I was talking really fast, but we were, one of the things we're going to do is understand assessing the buildings, we're also going to be looking at what are the needs of the school district. And we want to be able to marry those up and understand like, okay, how could this building fit the need that you're having? So that's part of this analysis and doing and getting recommendations for it. You know, it's things like looking at a listed building and, you know, could that be modified? Or, you know, is it possible to modify it for housing? Is it something that would be so expensive, exorbitant, like, you know, expensive, it just doesn't make any sense? Things like, do we have the right zoning in place? Like, there's all these questions. And so until we do the analysis, we can't tell you what it's going to be because we have to do it and really understand the properties and what that potential is. So I, I think there's, there are a lot of options on the table and I think as we talk through the project like early, these kinds of all the things, all the ideas that have come up, I know like in the facilities committee, you've talked about how like there are just all these ideas that come up, but it's really hard to make the decision because we haven't done all the analysis to understand it. And so what we want to be able to do is go through that process, understand what those opportunities are, have that conversation and then come to a, get to a place where here's the recommendation so that decisions can be made and have the information to make those decisions.
Okay, Trustee Whit and Trustee Walsh.
Hey, I actually got it turned on. I think I know the answer to this question, this first one, and I think this might be more burly, but just want to clarify, is the Sealy Lake property involved in this? Because I think I know the answer, but still clarify. And then the other question I have is, you know, like Missoula is a very passionate and involved community, which I love, but how do we know or how do you guys figure out that you have gotten an accurate representation of the community rather than just the loudest, most passionate people in that area? Because I definitely have one of them on the list that is in my mind as being like, oh, I know this, a group that is very passionate, but I don't know that that's the predominant opinions.
So yes, the Sealy Lake property is on, is part of the project, it's the surrounding, the property surrounding the school here. That is your question about how do you know whether it's the loudest voice or really what everyone feels is one of the biggest challenges of public engagement that we have. And so that's where, part of the reason we have Rachel on the team, so Rachel was part of, I mentioned the Midtown Master Plan, they did a very unique process with that and they had like a, she, it's the grassroots effort, I'm using the wrong terms, but it was basically outside of the master plan, which also had its own public engagement team, she was tasked with really reaching out to all of the stakeholders for equitable engagement, as Jeff was pointing out to me.
First of all.
You know, and she was really creative at doing that. I know she went and actually found different people that had volunteers in the neighborhoods that went around and talked to everybody. She really engaged that community in a different way. It has to do with when you have meetings and, you know, there's, there's a lot of different ways you can do that. And we do have to be careful about those loud voices. Another reason to do an open house, rather, sometimes if you do like a presentation style meeting, those loud voices are the only ones you get heard. So I'm sure you've all experienced during public meetings and the people that show up. If you do an open house, it kind of evens the playing field a little bit so that everybody has an opportunity to talk and it's not just somebody, you know, standing up and taking all the time. But I think Rachel is really key to that and her experience and her understanding and she has a real passion for reaching those, all those groups.
A note on the open house format, we often set up several different listening stations. So to hear your, have your voice heard at an open house, it's not standing up to the microphone and presenting, it's often a one-on-one conversation or small conversation.
Okay, is another question. So this is another question about our imagined end. Missoula's experienced so much growth and really growth that's not been evenly distributed among our district. It seems like there's going to be some major rezoning or changes to the zoning. I'm wondering just how detailed these recommendations will be at the end? Is it that we will just get a list of our properties and their values and their needs? Or is it, will it be so detailed that it's, you know, here's where growth is happening, here's where some zoning issues have come up and these are our recommendations, given those things? Or will we, at the end of this, have to think about growth, have to think about zoning, given the WGM information? Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, as we face kind of a district that's not quite balanced at the moment, can WGM give us some recommendations towards redistributing ourselves? Is that something that this project could encompass? Or is that something that we get to the end of this project and then we then additionally have to kind of think about that?
Part of what WGM brings to this project is that we are deeply involved in the development of and growth of Missoula, and so we have a really solid understanding of that. So we can bring that context into the process so that, and absolutely, like, we're going to, if you want to, recommendations will include rezoning a property, if that's, you know, if you want to change it to housing and it's zoned for open space, that's going to be part of the recommendation. There is the current ongoing process with zoning that's going to be updated, so we are tracking that very closely and there's a timing of potentially getting that done through that process rather than having to go through a separate rezoning process. So those are all things that we want to tie together and provide value for the school district. As far as growth within the school districts, that is not something specifically part of this, that we, part of our scope at this point. I don't know if Mike or Pat or someone wants to address that at all.
Yeah, I think, you know, part of the conversation's been talking about boundary studies and, and looking at how we distribute students. You know, we had, we talked a little bit when our, when we did the data dashboard, that we had the Paxton School was about 100 students fewer than what they predicted and Mole ended up being about 100 more. And then you talk about some of these big projects that they're, they're approving, it seems like on a weekly basis, you know, 457 units and some subdivision, you know, but they're also looking at 20-year build outs for those. And then it was enlightening to go to the meeting that the city hosted in the library and, and looking at the maps and trying to overlay what our district looks like, what the amount of density and the potential use. Where is that predicted growth going to be? Is that going to be up in the Rattlesnake area or are we going to see more in Midtown? There's just a lot of way to answer the question, but I think this helps constrain, I think of it a little bit like a two-legged stool or a three-legged stool where this study is a component of that and our boundary study is a component of that. And then how do we weave in those other elements, you know, in terms of equity, in terms of distribution? If we say that 44% of our district needs pre-reduced lunch qualification, but 90% of it is concentrated in the four elementary schools, one middle school and one high school, what does that look like? I think those are big questions for the board to consider. But I think this in terms of, do we need to add another middle school? Do we need to look at, you know, redistributing where people are in our community is in a play.
Are we doing a boundary study?
It seems like we have to. I think the growth is.
From EO to 12?
We want to.
We want to? Timeline.
Well, I think the timeline is actually kind of a question that continues to formulate in my mind, you know, board approves this project, this study, you know, when do we start that? Because the city is currently planning to unveil, you know, or they're unveiling the plan, they have the plan, they're taking all this input and feedback right now to see if they're going to make any significant tweaks or changes to it. But then when they're done, which I believe is from March of 2025, you know, would that be a better time for us to start that, knowing that we have more information? But in the meantime, can we look at our demographics and some of those other key indicators and look at, you know, when we want to start that boundary study process in January with a conclusion sometime in the spring? Like, you know, some, sometimes those things, depending on who you're working with, they might say, you know, the longer you, you track a, a study or something, the less value it has if you have a tighter timeline on it. But there's, there's people that answer that question for us.
Trustee Mercer, then Trustee Walsh.
I just want to follow up on the, you know, I always feel like too transparent. I don't want to be disappointed in the deliverables. I want to get something that I feel like that was a good use of money. So I want to be clear what the deliverables are. So like following up, the superintendent was talking about possibility of trades, is that part of it? Or is it just identifying, like, you really should go find land south of here? Or are you going to help find and identify, like, here is a landowner himself that would be willing to trade this thing in the South Hills for this thing farther down? Like, something concrete or just, is it just that you should do this in a general sense? Yeah. I mean, what are, I guess I really don't want to be disappointed in the deliverables. And right now, what I care about, if, if that's too much deliverables, I'm expecting are stuff that's simpler, like, what's the value of this property? Could it ever be used for a school? What are the engineering problems? What are we burning on it right now? What would it take to get it up to education standards? Like, all that is more engineering with a little real estate and some education in. And all this, this seems like a bigger project, so then what is the bigger project that we get? I'm still questioning that. But I guess the real concrete question is, would you help facilitate trades or is that beyond the scope of the deliverables?
So as an example, there's the property up Lower Millcrake that Burley mentioned that it sits between, it doesn't have access, that sits between.
Rinald and.
Sorry, what was that?
Rinald Park.
Rinald Park?
Yeah.
And there's county property on the other side. That's an example of a piece of property that probably has very limited value for MCPS. And that's a easy, we have a lot, part of what we've presented as our value to this project is we do have a large network within the community and we want to have those conversations with the city or the county to see, maybe there is an opportunity that they want to take that property, create a larger park and there's an opportunity for a trade to get a different piece of property that makes a lot more sense in the, to fit the needs of MCPS. So we, as part of this, this process, we are going to have those conversations. I think the actual like trade of that is outside, is beyond the process or this project. But I think we are absolutely committed to having those conversations to move this process along. And I, I know it's feeling a little bit vague in what we're as far as like, what do we actually get? And it's just, it's very difficult to answer that question without going through the actual process. I think looking at, looking at like one of the buildings, you know, Prescott is one that obviously is a big question mark. And, you know, I think looking at three options, I think it's like, are you going to re-renovate the building and make it a community space? Are you going to make it a housing? Are you going to, you know, sell it as is? I mean, those are all options we're going to look at. And our, what we want at the end is a recommendation of here's what you need to do. And I think Jeff also mentioned there's kind of a decision tree potentially. So there, I think that it's, it's just a, there's a lot of different ways you could go with this and for each property. And we're trying to guide you along there and as we get feedback from you, we can really help you get further along and really get to that endpoint that you're looking for. It's just going to take, it's going to take this whole process to get through it. And so you're going to get a lot of concrete information through that assessment piece of it, that, and I know you, and you understand that and you mentioned that. From there, we're going to work through that. This is something that we do at WGM all the time. This is really what we do is we help our clients make decisions and meet their goals. And it's a little bit messy along the way sometimes, but like this is what we are really good at and we are very committed to helping you make those decisions and get you to a point where you feel confident in how you can move forward.
So this would be a pitch to use WGM because as we're sitting here talking, I'm thinking, you know, we really do have to have some big conversations as a district to face all of the growth that's happening. WGM does seem to have such a seat at all those tables with all of these different agencies and community meetings happening around their growth. And, you know, one of the reasons you hire consultants is to take the heat. So it would be nice as we face some of those big decisions as a district to have experts at the table guiding some of those things we're going to have to think about. So if we're spending $300,000, you know, I'm kind of saying, why not stop them at just talking about these properties? It would be nice to have them also contribute to kind of the bigger issues that our district's facing.
Trustee Whitaker.
I think WGM Group is awesome. I know a lot of the work that you do with the city. Here's my concern. Been on school board for I don't even know how long now, year and a half or so. The past consultants in my experience that we've hired have not delivered. Our consultant in hiring the superintendent did not deliver. Our demographer did not, not you, Ben found you, not you before that. You guys seem like, yeah, Micah came on his own after we reopened it, but we, we don't have a great track record in doing this right now, in my opinion, and I am conscious of that and I want this done. I want these buildings taken care of and I want a plan to move forward for our community because you're right, like, I don't want them sitting there. But I'm also hesitant, our demographer that we had really, I mean, I sat there and told him what he was doing wasn't, and so I am cautious because this is a lot of money and it's all the money we have left in the pot that we got from Prescott. So it's like, I wish there was a happier meeting because I, I share with, with Trustee Mercer, like, what is the deliverable? Because if the deliverable is a decision tree, I'm less comfortable than the deliverable being, here's our suggestion for this property. I don't want the, I don't want the tree, I want the, we suggest this because I feel like the committee over the last few years has been doing the tree. Does that make sense?
Speak to them real quickly. So WGM Group's been in Missoula for 56 years and our lifeblood as a company depends on us delivering on our promises. And I don't say that lightly. We've got 101 people across our three offices and every one of our families and livelihoods depends on us.
Yeah, I appreciate that a lot.
And I think we are tested because of the consultants we had before, but they were not Missoulians. And I think that's a big part where I said back in September, I fully support the recommendation from our administrators and I like the fact that you guys are Missoulians and I think that's what's leading me towards this because that is a big chunk of money and the budget issues we've been holding as elected officials really weighs on us and that's why we're have sticker shock at the moment is because, you know, this is really personal, it's our kids, our children here. So I think that's where a lot of this is coming from. But I'll go ahead and let Vice Chair Walker Andrews ask a question.
Yeah, I feel like what I'm going to ask, though, is sort of too late to ask because we're trying to make a decision now. But I almost wondered if with all the names removed or something, you could just give us a couple of pieces of something like that you did for someone else? So we could see the level of detail that's available. I mean, because that's what, you know, we're all sitting here going, not, we don't know, and I don't want to break any, you know, rules, but just so we could see, this is what it looks like. This is the level of detail about your electric system needs X, Y, and Z. But on top of that, then the higher level of questions that you know about, because you're in Missoula, about development and people's concerns.
So the presentation, we, we have another presentation that we did for the interview that actually goes through all of that. And we, when we submitted on the, for the, in response to the RFQ, we provided example products. We did a project for Scott Street. This is, Jeff referenced it, for the CLT project, where we did a full feasibility study. We go through, we look at the development potential and all of the constraints and opportunities. Whether that, there's the regulatory portion of that. So understanding the growth policy, zoning, understanding that that site in particular had some environmental issues that were dealt with, understanding capacity for infrastructure. So is there capacity to develop this site to support housing without significant infrastructure upgrades that are going to be really potentially expensive? Understanding all of that. So and then looking at entitlement options for that and how that could be redeveloped. So that's kind of the land side of it. And then on the architecture side, the building side, really understanding all of the systems, assessing all of them, understanding how that could be, uses can be modified. And if we had the architect here, he would do a much better job of explaining this. But there is, we went through and really detailed that process and to explain what we would be looking at. And I also, I spent a lot of time putting together a pretty detailed scope for the Burley and Mike and Pat scene. And really went through all of the things that we're going to do and look at and understand. So and we, and as Jeff kind of mentioned also, we've looked through, we've really tried to cut it back. And we try, but we want to give you a really good product that is useful. And we feel like if we cut too much on that out, then you're not going to have anything that's going to allow you to move forward and make decisions.
Trustee Wall.
Kind of a two-part question. So with various concerns about the deliverables and what those might look like, is there any reason that we couldn't cut this into maybe two pieces? Where we do one or two maybe easier properties at first to see what the process of deliverables look like? And then move on to the rest of everything if we like that, you know, something that's not so, I guess, synergistic with everything else? And then number two, just having this presentation tonight, the special meeting and now this discussion. You know, I know the committee's been working on this for some time and kind of been spinning wheels for a couple of years. But is there a reason we have to decide right now? Would be my other question.
I'll take a stab in Jeff or Kate, correct me if I'm wrong. And in the discussion about breaking it down, we talked about this in committee, and it just gets more expensive. Right now, Arlene did the math for just a minute ago. It's about a dollar a square foot for this project when we're evaluating all these facilities and kind of doing all the community involvement and all the other pieces. It's actually from a, kind of more of a construction standpoint, it's, it's a pretty value-driven project. The, so the idea, and that's part of what Kate was trying to explain is that if we try and just cycle off a property or two, it just, we have, we still have to have travel. We aren't able to layer in all the different aspects, bringing in the engineer who's going to come in and evaluate all the electrical systems in the building. And we're just doing one or two at a time. It just, it gets more costly. To the, to the second question, yeah, but, you know, initially, we were, we were talking about bringing this to the board right after we had selected WGM as the final person. They went through an extensive interview process. And so that's a part that's missing, I think, for the board. But that was what we were entrusted to do. We had some trustees on that committee that selected and vetted the groups. And so we delayed it initially because of the budget issues that we were, that we were going through. And they made me kind of suggest it didn't seem like that was the right time. So we brought it forward now. We could delay this indefinitely. But if we do, there really isn't a need for a committee to exist or any, like, forward momentum. I talked about that stool where I'm looking at this, I'm looking at a boundary study. You know, how do we, how do we intertwine some of those things? And then just looking at growth, but at the same time, kind of a declining moment. There's just a lot of different variables that are going into potential decisions that board's going to have to make at some point in the future.
Any other questions from trustee? Trustee Mercer.
We are going to do it. To me, the Rattlesnake property, I, it doesn't make sense to bifurcate the property to me. We have other full use. We have the full ag facilities on here. We have Lowell's Park. We have the, you know, football field by the river. I don't understand why the soccer field isn't part of that question for the full 16 acres. So I guess, if we are going to do it, my request would be that we expand it not just to be the top five, but the full 16 in the Rattlesnake and see what. It just doesn't make sense to me to bifurcate that out.
Any other trustee questions? This is a full board motion. So is there a motion to move the recommendation forward? Or is there another motion a trustee would like to put forward?
I'll move the motion that's in front of us.
I'll move the motion that's in front of us. And then we can discuss a little more, I'm sure.
Is there a second? Second by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments?
I don't know. I sticker shock's real, but I guess it's some of the way to trust the administration to negotiate the best contact that's available in the market. So then it becomes a question of, do we want the service? And I guess just in my work lately, I've been approving a lot of bills that make my eyes water. But it, it's just, it is what it is. And I don't, you know, so if you want the service at some level. I, I hope we're clear on the deliverables. I think they will deliver on what they believe they are supposed to deliver on. It's just a question of, we have a meeting of minds if we're both thinking that we're delivering on the same thing. I will support this. And I guess for me, it's because we just start building for 30 years from now, and this is the first step of how we do it. And we need to know things like, could the piece farm be a middle school 50 years from now? Like, that is a valuable piece of knowledge. And this other thing, I guess we've been going round and round on, and Burley will often say that this is too small for a district. I guess I would like that to be, or for a school, you know, this, that building. And I'd like to just know that. I'd like to know that, yeah, the admin building can never be a school. But it would cost this most, the ADG compliant, and to use it for such and such. And that would be the cost. And by the way, and if you're sitting on it right now, you're burning this much, even with rent, you're burning this much a year. So just like to have all that in front of me. I guess I question the decision trees much because I, maybe it'll be there. But to me, it's just those facts. And then down the road, I mean, some of them will get rid of. But a lot of them we're going to be happy with. Like, we're going to be absolutely happy that Head Start continues to be in that building, right? It's just that's not going to be an issue, I don't think. But so that's my, I support it. But and I, I struggle with how much it costs. But I assume that's the market. I don't know what else to say about it.
Any other trustee having final comments? I, I have one. And I said at the September meeting as well, I really do see this as an investment for our kids, you know, so that it helps our administration make the decisions that they need to make. So I fully support this recommendation. Any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, all trustees present. Welcome aboard. All right. So now we'll move on to item nine, which is new business. And first up is to approve transportation route mileage. And this is back over to you, Mr. Mike Williams.
I'll be much quicker here, I promise. This is, this is a four-mile thing that we go through every, every, we do it twice a year. We do it typically in October, and we'll do it again in January, February sometime. And what this is, TR1 reports that you'll see at page 13 through 16, identifies all of our routes and the mileage. And this report is, is, has the basis of our reimbursement from the state local reimbursement for our transportation costs. So our reimbursements are based off this report that we send into, into ultimately the county superintendent, then ultimately that goes to OPI, the state.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee Wall. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation for their transportation route mileage? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, all trustees present. Next up is to approve the Montana Masonic, Masonic, Masonic Foundation grant application. And this is over to you, Assistant Superintendent Shattuck.
I'll be quick as well. This is Louis Nelson. Some of you met him today. He's applying for a grant to buy a new oboe and a bassoon. Very expensive. So the, the recommendation is to be approved for this grant application.
Any questions from the trustee? CNN, this is a high school board motion. Is there a motion from a high school trustee to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by trustee Wall. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, all trustees present. Next up is to approve out-of-country student travel request. And back to you, Assistant Superintendent Shattuck.
Okay, this is about to die. Drive, this is a travel request. To Costa Rica.
You could have claimed them, they didn't get to go.
Okay. From Willow Affleck. She's a biology teacher at Calgate. And it's for October of 2025.
Okay. Any trustee questions? Trustee Hayes.
I just want to yell. Just a quick question on appendix A. It says the effective date is past. Is there an updated one for the liability?
I'm sure, yeah, it'll be updated, but I can look into that, for sure.
Any other trustee question? CNN, this is a high school board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Wall. Second by trustee Witcher. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comments? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, all trustees present. And the time is now 7:12, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Celia, for hosting us.
Thanks, Sean.